You may be here.
Good evening, the time is now five thirty. I would like to call, call to order the February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three Academic Achievement Committee meeting. I am Dr. Zafara Miller, Chair of the Committee and the District Five Representative for Prince George's County Board of Education. If anyone, everyone could please introduce themselves, starting with the board members who serve on the Academic Achievement Committee, any guest board members, and then the Prince George's County Public Schools Administrative Staff and the board staff in that order. Thank you.
Good evening, Curtis Valentine, at large member, Board of Education, committee member.
Hello, everyone. Albert Serrano Reeves, student member of the board and committee member.
Good evening, Kia McDaniel, Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
Good evening, Desanne Manzano Lee, Coordinating Supervisor, Specialty Programs and Curriculum and Instruction.
Good evening, Melissa Canny, ESOL Supervisor.
Good evening, everyone. Jessica Guerrero, Board Assistant to the Board Office.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rosa Lopez, Administrator Assistant to the Board Office.
Thank you so much, and thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. So, Mrs. Guerrero, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Dr. Zafara Miller.
Present.
Mrs. Adam Stafford. Mr. Valentine.
Here.
Mr. Serrano Reeves.
Here.
And Mr. Jackson. We have four.
Thank you so much. We'll go on to one point three adoption of the meeting agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting agenda?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The agenda is adopted. Let us move on to one point four, the approval of the January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve the January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The meeting minutes have been approved. Do we have any public comment?
No public comments.
No public comment. Thank you. Great. So we will move on to the discussion items three point oh. And with this, Dr. Kia McDaniel's Director, I will now yield the floor to you and your team and colleagues to present this evening's agenda items.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Good evening, everyone. Our team is excited to be here with the Academic Achievement Committee and to share some updates on the implementation of the ESOL Strategic Plan, the learning experiences our students who are English learners participate in, and the parent resources and opportunities for the families of our English learners. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Canny, who is going to get started with that information.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to share some progress updates as Dr. McDaniel mentioned regarding our ESOL Strategic Plan, as well as the alignment with Prince George's County's Board of Education English Learner Work Group. Let me make sure you can see the entire presentation. So just to get you a little context, I'd like to start with the demographics of our multilingual learner population in Prince George's County. We currently have thirty-two thousand ninety-eight English learners in the district, which is about twenty-four point six percent of the population. About sixty percent of our multilingual learners are in elementary school with a little under twenty percent in middle school and a little more than twenty percent in high school. Our multilingual learners come from a hundred and two different countries and speak a hundred and five different languages. As we look at the top languages and countries represented by our multilingual learners in Prince George's County, I'd like to take this time to clear up a common misconception regarding English learners in the ESOL program. As you can see from the languages represented, not all multilingual learners speak Spanish, though in Prince George's County that is the predominant language of our multilingual learners at almost ninety percent. Additionally, not all Spanish speakers are enrolled in our ESOL program as they are already English proficient. Looking at the top countries, you can see that most multilingual learners are born in the U.S. However, this population has been shifting in our county. To give you a little perspective, in twenty fourteen fifteen, sixty-eight percent of our multilingual learners were born in the U.S. Compared to this year, where thirty-five percent of our multilingual learners are born in the U.S. Now I'll go into our ESOL Strategic Plan. We began the development of the ESOL Strategic Plan before COVID. The pandemic, as well as staffing challenges for our teachers and our central office, have had an impact on full implementation. Additionally, with the recommendations from the Maryland State Department of Education's Blueprint Work Group for English Learners and our own county's Board of Education English Learner Work Group, we are currently revising the plan to streamline the strategies to ensure we integrate some of those recommendations and address pandemic recovery. Our current strategic plan has four main focuses, looking at improving academic achievement of English learners, increasing the capacity of staff of English learners, decreasing ESOL vacancies, and increasing family and community engagement. I'm now going to share our current work on the four areas of the strategic plan and highlight the alignment with the Board of Education's English Learner Work Group recommendations. When we're looking at the area of academic achievement, our priority in the ESOL office is on increasing our English learner's English language proficiency, as well as increasing the percentage of English learners exiting from ESOL. As you can see from our most recent numbers, the pandemic did have a significant impact on L's progress. You will also notice that in school year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, access was not administered due to the pandemic. You can also see from this chart that the number of long-term English learners or English learners who have been in the program for more than six years has also been increasing. To address our academic challenges and increase academic achievement, we've begun implementing numerous strategies. First, I will highlight our accomplishments last year. We implemented ESOL Language Labs one and two at high school to target our long-term English learners. For these courses, we are using our students' language strengths to address their areas of need to improve their overall English proficiency. We have also implemented a newcomer academy at elementary to streamline the support for newcomers. Additionally, we've implemented EduSkills, which is a data integration platform specifically for English learners. In the school year twenty twenty-one, our office began using EduSkills to store and share data for multilingual learners. The platform allows teachers and administrators to access historical and current multilingual learner data for any English learner in Prince George's County. In addition to housing the data, our office uses EduSkills to collect student work samples, to assign and sign accommodation documentation, and complete parent notification letters. The implementation of EduSkills aligns with the board's recommendation to implement a system-like elevation. Additionally, we have also developed a focused learning walk tool for elementary that's been adapted for secondary as well, and it's anchored in our ESOL key strategies. And we've begun using the tool last year, but had to put it on hold this year to do shifts in our central office staff to schools. However, some schools have still been using our learning walk tool to monitor their implementation of the ESOL key strategies and to determine the next steps for their school performance plan. In our office, we also created listening and speaking tasks, which we integrated into Pearson and provided support for schools with training. We are working on developing data reporting that will be district-wide and for schools. And we also have worked with the district and provided Canvas courses with resources to support English learner instruction. This year, we've been working on supporting schools with their school's performance plans focused on English learners, as well as providing ongoing training to schools on access implementation. We have also been enhancing our current curricula. We developed an elementary ESOL writing toolkit for grades three to five and are working on a toolkit for grades K to two. We've also worked on updating the cable courses for science and social studies at middle school. And those are the courses that support language development for our newcomers. And we are focusing on an intermediate course at middle school as well. At high school, we have updated the newcomer and beginner curriculum and are working to make changes to the high school curriculums based on guidance from the Maryland State Department of Education and to meet the changing demographics at high school. In the future, we're planning to continue to implement our learning walk tool to ensure that schools are implementing strategies for, to meet the needs of English learners and to complete a full rollout of EduSkills. Currently, our ESOL teachers, administrators, and school test coordinators have access to the platform. But in the future, we plan to add families and classroom teachers. I'd like to highlight some of the work around Goal One. I've shared the different curricular updates, and we have worked on it each level. At elementary ESOL, we have been working on the writing toolkit, and you can see on the right, the right-hand side, our ESOL teachers are talking, and they're tweeting about their implementation, and are very excited to see their students improving their writing. The writing toolkit focuses on small group instruction that targets key language uses to inform, explain, narrate, and argue as identified by Lita. The lessons build background, provide direct vocabulary instruction, and are based on a mentor text. Opportunities to practice oral language are purposefully embedded throughout the reading and writing process. During the drafting stage, English learners have the support of modified graphic organizers, sentence starters, and teacher conferences where they receive individualized feedback, standard-based feedback on their writing. I'm going to show you a quick, short, two-minute video of an ESOL teacher conferencing with a student about utilizing precise word choice to enrich their quality of writing.
Alright, so today, we're going to look at your writing, and we're going to conference to talk about some things that you did well and some things that we can work on to make your writing even better. So what, where is your central idea sentence?
My central idea, um, sentence is... I don't know.
Let's look back here. So which color here was for your central idea?
It was the green.
Yep. So which one is your central idea? Can you read it for me?
He worked hard to do the first one.
To do the first one. See this word, "do," and over here, we're looking for the precise vocabulary. What word do you think we could use instead of "do" that would be a little bit stronger? Make? Is there any other word? What, was he, he was making it? What else was he doing? He was...
Invent?
Invent? Yeah, we really, worked really hard to invent. We could, invent is stronger than make or do. So, um, when we're looking here, you can change this word "do" to, to invent. So you can erase it. And that's a more precise word than "do." Good. So next, you're going to be looking for your connectors. So any of your words from your transition words that you used in your body paragraph to help connect the ideas. And you'll highlight those pink.
Um, George Ferris will overcame his struggles.
That's a really strong topic sentence. So you are clearly stating that this paragraph is going to be about all his struggles that he overcame. So I really love that topic sentence that you have. Um, I see right here the word "also." So you used one of your transition words also, so you can highlight that one pink.
And so the writing toolkit was designed as both a rich curriculum for our English learners and a professional development opportunity for our ESOL teachers. And it's really exciting as we go around to schools, seeing all of our elementary ESOL teachers implementing the curriculum, their posters around the walls, and just the students excited about writing. So in addition to providing a rich curriculum at every level, one part of improving the academic achievement of our English learners is to provide targeted support and interventions. The ESOL program provides students and teachers with access to five main programs. Joy English is a program for English learners in kindergarten and first grade that helps to develop oral language. Students have been using Joy English for around three hundred and, three thousand eight hundred and sixty-six hours and have completed forty-six speaking activities on average. Learning A to Z is an additional program that provides our teachers with research-based pre-kindergarten through sixth-grade learning resources that helps teachers to integrate the resources into their lessons and helps students to become proficient readers. So far this school year, teachers have logged on and used the resource a little more than two thousand times, and students have logged on for over three thousand hours using the Raz Kids program. When we look at Brain Pop, it's a supplemental resource that's used K-12 in our district. And English learners use different programs within Brain Pop to support their language and vocabulary development. With Brain Pop, over ten thousand teachers have logged in individual times, and over a hundred thousand students have logged in this school year, individual logins. Speak Agent is a digital platform that is aligned to our curriculum in middle school with mathematics and science. It empowers our diverse learners to master challenging academic language. It's designed specifically for our students who are behind in reading proficiency, and students in the Speak Agent platform have learned over two hundred thousand new terms this school year. And we are excited. We had them analyze our data, and it showed that students were improving not only with their language, but also with math. Rosetta Stone is used with seventh and eighth grade and high school newcomers. It helps to develop all language skills, listening, speaking, reading, and writing, and vocabulary in English. And Rosetta Stone is used at fifty-seven of our schools, and students have used the program on an average of about four hours, ranging from point one hours to a student that's used it ninety-six hours. All of these programs can be used both at school and at home, and we do see student usage both times of the day. Additionally, I've shared that we implemented the ESOL speaking and writing tasks. We have worked with the testing office to integrate our tasks into Pearson, and they help to show students growth in speaking and in writing, which are the two lowest domains on access. In elementary, we have the tasks for every grade level, and the tasks are organized at secondary by the course, Newcomer, Beginner, Intermediate, Advanced, and Language Lab. You can see the pictures at the bottom. They show a sample writing task for an eighth-grade student that provides background. There's a little audio clip that goes along with the writing task and then helps the students to prepare their ideas. This is modeled after what access looks like and gives the students practice prior to taking access in January and February. This particular data here shows our students who have grown from the beginning of the year with our tasks to the middle of the year. You can see that we had over twenty-five thousand students take both assessments and show progress. Fifty percent, almost fifty percent showed progress or growth in speaking, and a little over seventy-six percent made progress in writing, with the greatest improvement occurring in middle school. Now, as I show a little bit about Goal Two of our strategic, strategic plan, we are focused on increasing the capacity of staff. Last year, we implemented the ESOL key strategies and did that through a train-the-trainer model and ensured that all department chairpersons were trained and provided training in their schools. We also conducted the learning walks using our tool and provided professional development for staff throughout the district and conducted over a thousand visits to support one hundred schools last year. This year, we have focused and continued to focus our training for the staff in the district on the key strategies, but we're focusing on integrating the key strategies into the content areas. We've also begun the transition of two new comprehensive high schools to support ESOL programs this year, which is Surratsville and Largo. This aligns with the Prince George's County Board of Ed's recommendation to have an ESOL program in every school by twenty twenty-five, which will be accomplished beginning next year. We've also provided and targeted support to schools with the shift of our coaches to schools. We had to be strategic with our support. But our specialists, coaches, and I have conducted a school visit or completed an observation and supported teachers at ninety-eight schools this year. We also have developed a specific ESOL paraprofessional, professional development track, and we're in the process of developing an ESOL Safe Schools video that will be available for all staff. This is a part of the Board of Education Work Group recommendation that a hundred percent of staff are trained on meeting the needs of ELS. The goal of this, the Safe Schools video is to transition the series to Safe Schools and be available for all staff next year. And this year, along with the district's focus, we have also provided math-focused English learner professional development, as well as additional self-paced and guided professional development. This next slide highlights that professional development that we have provided. This school year alone, we have provided sixty-one different opportunities to a little over forty-nine hundred staff. As you can see from the list of topics, we provide professional development on understanding refugees, family and community engagement, supporting the implementation of our programs and curriculum, and additional trainings on the ESOL key strategies. In addition to the professional development offered throughout the district, the ESOL office has nine continuing professional development courses that we offer each year. So far this year, we've had two hundred and ninety staff complete one of our courses, and I'll share a little bit more about our ESOL CPD pathway, which aims to increase ESOL-certified staff in the district. And I'll share that in just a few slides. In the future, for Goal Two, we plan to continue and enhance our school coaching and in-person training around the ESOL key strategies. We find that getting into the schools and supporting them with their particular goal or where they need improvement is the most impactful. We're also planning to continue with coaching first-year ESOL teachers again. And next year, elementary ESOL teachers with the writing toolkit are going to complete a focused book study around writing. And additionally, the high school is working with Area Three, and they have a professional learning community with high school administrators and lead teachers to support the needs of English learners. When we look at Goal Three, when we initially developed our Goal Three, we wanted to focus on decreasing ESOL vacancies. This particular goal is being shifted from decreasing ESOL vacancies to increasing the percentage of staff with an ESOL endorsement. For this school, we do host an annual job fair, but I'm going to highlight how we are aiming to grow our own ESOL teachers within Prince George's County on the next three slides. So I'll start with what we did last year. We did, in supporting human resource, identify a staff member who is working to lead external recruitment specifically for ESOL positions. She's regularly connecting with universities and screens candidates. We also started the ESOL CPD pathway, and we've adjusted the cohort to include a praxis prep and a linguistic course to ensure our participants can pass the ESOL praxis at the end. This particular pathway aligns with one of the board recommendation, board workgroup recommendations to have twenty percent of teachers fully trained to teach L's. The CPD pathway, I'm very excited, was a recommendation from last year from the board when we presented to the Academic Achievement Committee and has been tremendously successful. We have also revamped our master's program and started a doctoral, doctoral program to continue to develop our teachers and leaders around meeting the needs of English learners. And then additionally, we collaborated with Human Resources to develop the ESOL Resident Teacher Program. It's the first in the state. And many of these recommendations right here align with the board workgroup recommendations to develop a pipeline for staff to become ESOL teachers. So I'll tell you a little bit more about each of them after I share what we're going to continue to doing. So this year, we are focusing on continuing our cohorts and expanding our CPD courses. And we are also supporting schools with SBB and ESOL staffing. We are hoping to continue to develop an ESOL recruitment video so that we can find teachers externally and hold virtual symposiums, as well as conduct outreach to external people who may be interested in becoming ESOL teachers. We are also exploring the potential of bonus or differential pay specifically for ESOL as it's a hard-to-staff area. When we look at the CPD pathways, as I was sharing, this was a recommendation from the committee last year. The CPD pathway, we had offered CPDs and teachers could take them one by one, but we didn't have a structure where it allowed staff to go through all of the CPDs and end with some type of certification. We now have that structure and allow staff to participate in all of our CPD courses with the ESOL praxis at the end and adding an ESOL endorsement. We've developed both an elementary and a secondary pathway. It's comprised of eight courses and includes taking that praxis, and then we also have them participate in our ESOL job fair. We are currently on our seventh cohort, and you can see from the first cohort, we had thirteen people, and all thirteen have passed the praxis and are now ESOL-certified. For cohort two, nine out of eleven have passed their praxis. And the remaining cohorts, we have ninety-seven staff at various stages, and currently four have passed their praxis. The CPD pathway, as you can see since last year, has added twenty-six ESOL-certified teachers in the district. As you look at, as I shared briefly, we started the ESOL Resident Teacher Program with Human Resources. This program allows individuals with a bachelor's to transfer into ESOL. And we had four ESOL teachers begin this year, and we're hoping to have five to ten new resident teachers next school year. For our university partnerships, we've had partnerships with universities since the early two thousands. We have very, various partnerships with different universities and offer both masters and certificate programs. In the number of participants, you will see the number that's in parentheses is those that have completed or the total, and the number that is outside is those that have completed the program. And then the last school of our strategic plan is to increase family and community engagement. As you might have noticed, we've provided various professional development opportunities in the district around meeting the needs of our students and supporting their families. Last year, our office also conducted family engagement and cultural competency workshops, as well as professional development that focused on supporting registrars, parent engagement assistance, and school-based equity leads. Additionally, we work with the Office of Interpreting and Translation, and they have developed a Safe Schools video that ensures that staff have the information for communicating with families. We also host events in collaboration with the Office of Interpreting and the International Office for international families. We have begun collecting data on ESOL parent events that are being hosted in schools to determine where we might have bright spots to celebrate those schools and to also identify the needs throughout the district. Last year, there were a hundred different ESOL-specific family nights that were held. And this year, we are working to create an ESOL outreach position or a family engagement position that would be fully funded by Title III and support families and schools. This goal is to have, be integrated into our grant next year, and we're aiming to create a team who will develop ESOL family night resources for all schools and host events. So thank you for allowing me to share with you about our ESOL program and what we've been doing to meet the needs of our multilingual learners in Prince George's County. This time, I'll take any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much, colleagues. Any questions? Okay, I see board member Adam Stafford and then board member Valentine, and student board member Serrano Reeves. So we'll go in that order.
Alright, thank you so much. I just wanted to say I was really happy to hear about all of the professional development resources that are available to educators. And I think it's just really awesome that, you know, you have this, um, this program where nine out of eleven teachers are passing that praxis and, and getting that certification. That's, that's just really awesome, and I'm just happy to see that that's happening. I also just wanted to ask, you know, in terms of, um, sort of the diffusion of some of the best practices that you're seeing in ESOL classrooms and in the ESOL PD, the diffusion of those practices into the general education space. I'd like to just hear more about what you, you, you and your team are thinking about. How can we ensure that all educators have some experience? have some experience with some of these ESOL practices? Because they can be useful for a lot of students as well. So I'm just wondering, um, since you're doing such an emphasis on the professional development and people are getting these certifications and you have a very like structured program. Just what are your thoughts on how to diffuse this to the the general education teachers as well? But overall, this is really awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you um for sharing, for sharing your highlights about our praxis. I do have to share, people weren't passing the praxis until we added the praxis course on. So we added something in. They had the knowledge. It's just praxis test-taking can be a challenge. So we added that made the success rate and people were able to pass.
That's really great.
Thank you. As for our strategies, we focused um and developed our ESOL key strategies. In twenty-twenty-one, we started with three and making sure that we got them out to all schools. And what we found is with targeting a set of specific strategies that we would share with all schools, we've actually seen schools implementing those strategies. And those strategies are research-based, what meets the needs of English learners, visuals, sentence frames, modified graphic organizers, collaborative conversations. And it helps to really focus schools so they can do a learning walk and see if their schools are implementing those strategies. And if not, then they can target the one and go and build on each strategy. So we found that it's given us common language across the district. And also, we've seen it implemented. We were very excited when we started with the first three and went out and saw teachers actually doing it, not just our ESOL teachers. We saw more classroom teachers uh implementing the strategies.
That's great. I love that you all targeted on some specific practices and then sort of are measuring those specific practices instead of trying to just blinkily say, oh, everyone should be doing X, Y, and Z with just having that specific focus. Um, that's awesome. Thank you.
One thing I don't want um to get lost at the team is doing those, the teachers that are in those CPD classes are typically classroom teachers. And so the people who are getting certified as ESOL teachers are still in our mainstream classrooms. So they're able to take the skills that they're learning through the professional development that the ESOL team is providing, and they're taking it right back into their classrooms. They're just adding an additional um certification, but they may not be the official ESOL teacher on record um for students. But they are getting the skills and strategies they need to support their English learners in their content or mainstream class.
Thank you so much for that clarification. I, that's one thing I didn't, I did not, I was not clear on that. And so I think that's even a great, you know, marketing tool for us to tell people to come to our district. You know, that we offer this. I'm certain, I definitely am going to be using that. Oh, excuse me, sorry. Sorry. Bless you, child. But I'm going, I'm going to definitely say that um as I'm out recruiting people to the to the district. That's an awesome uh program.
Yes, please do.
And I can also add, Mrs. Adams, that the key strategies that we have developed will also be a part of our safe schools. So it will be something that every teacher will receive and have knowledge of.
Thank you, Board Member Valentine.
Thank you. Um, this two points. The first point, um, the piece of data that jumped out at me, um, and it seems a little counterintuitive, is that forty percent of the students who are English as a second language are, were born in the United States. Um, and so my question is, is my, can I assume that English is not being spoken in the home or not spoken as the first language? And so they're not getting those, you know, but what, you know, a family where English is the first language? And if so, um, how are we working with families or uh having conversations with these communities? You know, again, I'm a novice, but you know, I was in grad school with um members of the community, of Latin American community in California. That was dumbfounded that many of them whose parents are from Central America did not speak Spanish. Like, they didn't speak Spanish any better than I did. Because uh there's a sense, maybe not the most positive one, um, that there has to be some sort of sense of assimilation to the point of um extent, extension, I mean extinction of their native language, which I don't agree with either. But I'm curious about how we have conversations with families about the connection between English being spoken um more in the home um and how that impacts them in the school building. And the second question is around, particularly around recruitment of of teachers um who speak a second language. How can we, what are some areas where you are um being more innovative or experimenting or ways that we can um think outside of the box? I mean, I work in this space like a lot of other people. Um, and I'm just looking for new ideas, but you know, what, what's something that's being done that um we think that we could push further, further out um than other places? Um, but yeah, the question around sort of being speaking, speaking uh English at home. And then secondly, how we can be a little more aggressive and bold in our recruitment strategies?
So um regarding our, I would say our early childhood, the students who may be um coming to our schools and speaking another language at home. So to give you a little context, our students, when they register, have to complete a home language survey. And if any of those questions, there's three questions, do you speak another language at home? Do your parents speak another language at home? Are we born in another country? And if they put another language down, then we assess them to determine their English language proficiency. And so a lot of students who, from birth until about five years old, speak another language at home, and they're enrolled in our ESOL program because they're not English proficient when they become. So that would be about that forty percent. And as I shared, that used to be about sixty-seven percent. So we are seeing a larger influx at our secondary level are students who aren't necessarily born here. We do work with the Office of Interpreting for probably the last couple of years, we have provided what is called Kinder Connect. And we do a training for families when they're registering their children in the spring and in the summer. And we give them training on reading and math, and we give them manipulatives as well as books to take home and strategies for working with their children to help them to become prepared. So that is done in English and in Spanish and really helps the families. Uh, we're looking at expanding, and we have a few other interpreters that come and support that event.
And and so is this an area where some of our, and I'm not even sure we call them anymore, uh, parent outreach advisors or um those individuals who are in our schools, um particularly, I know some of the higher need schools. And I believe there was a target to have many of them um be able to speak a second language as well. Is there a way that they can help facilitate um you know, some of this adult learning um in this language learner program at night or or during the school day, or just try to um really build a bridge between the communities, families, and the students?
So I think Board Member Valentine, you hit the nail on the head by um saying that are there other um places in PGCPS and not just the ESOL team that can focus on this work? And absolutely, it's a district-wide initiative. We know that um probably some of those initiatives suffered due to the pandemic. But we are confident that as a district, we will continue to um emphasize our outreach engagements at the central office and at the school level with the supports of parent engagement assistance, with the supports of the team in our community schools, with the supports of our professional school counselors, with all of the work that we're doing on um on, on um uh culturally, being culturally responsive so that parents know that their languages are welcome, they're appreciated, and that they too have a place and are valued in our system. And so that they are comfortable and all of our schools are places where they are welcomed as they learn, uh, learn English and help their students to um engage in the process.
And just to add to that, um, our parent engagement assistants, um, some of them in their schools do have some English classes for parents. But more importantly, they're talking to parents about how they can engage with their student, their child at home, how they can help them with their homework in the native language. So our parents do not have to become fluent in English to be able to support their children, to ask them questions about what they might be reading in the native language, about um things that they're doing in the grocery store. And so their native language has a place as well. And while we want to support parents who are um learning English, by the partnerships that we have, we also want to encourage our families to continue to use their native language because of the rich dialogue that takes place um in the home with the native language. So think about if you're learning a language, your child's learning a language, that's going to be limited language that you're able to use with one another. But if they're using the native language, they can have rich discussions about academic tasks and about, um, you know, family aspects as well.
Thank you.
And we have done training for the parent engagement assistants, as well as the community school coordinators and the equity leads who are pretty much the front-facing individuals with the families to make sure that they understand how to support English learners and what challenges they may bring um from our office so that they have that information. And we work with, I know English classes is not the priority, but we do work with Prince George's Community College and make sure that their English classes are shared with um throughout the district when those opportunities are offered. And then regarding staffing, I'm going to turn that over to Human Resources, who's not here. I, we screen all the candidates for ESOL to make sure that they um fit the requirements to become an ESOL teacher. But we don't do a whole lot of recruiting. We just connect with universities to try and bring as many people in the neighboring areas. I can tell you that one of the rationales for the Resident Teacher Program was because we had a lot of international teachers who may have had a degree, but it didn't qualify for our certification. So it gave them a pathway in through the Resident Teacher Program and allowed them to become teachers instead of only becoming pairs. We are also working to take some of our pairs through the Resident Teacher Program, kind of like a pair of the ESOL teacher pathway um in the future. But I, I'd have to defer that answer to Human Resources.
Thank you.
Thank you. Student Board Member Saran Ruiz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, my question was related towards the engagement um with ESOL parents, but it's already been touched on. So I just want to say thank you so much um for the cohesive presentation um and for compiling an update in terms of um the work with the ESOL program. Um, I was always in awe of the work that the ESOL work group put together on the board. And so um, you know, trying to find where we were in terms of the recommendations has always been like, you got to talk to this person, talk to this person. Um, so I'm glad it's, a lot of it's in the presentation now. Um, so I can definitely reference it, or if I'm talking to someone about it, um, touch on it. Um, but thank you for your work, and I love um what you mentioned about um working with parents, um, especially working with them in terms of their native language. Um, I know when I was coming up, I didn't really have that. Um, and so it was really just relying on my sister, who's like only like two years older, to try to help me with my homework, because I mean, my parents didn't speak English. Um, and so I love that that is an opportunity now um to support our students and make sure um they're learning at home as well. Um, so yeah, thank you so much for all your work.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. I'm actually, uh, some of the questions I had were asked, was like, oh, why do I have all these questions? So thank you. Um, I think it's brilliant, uh, everything that, the work that you've done has been amazing. And I appreciate the way that you presented the goals, its alignment to the strategic plan, and then how you walked us through the touchpoints and the benchmarks and where you are. Um, professional development was one of the areas um that I was going to ask a question on. And looking at the train, the trainer model, and then knowing also that the um teachers who are receiving this training are going directly back to the classroom is awesome because they're going back and they're actually touching the uh, the, the students directly. But I was going to ask a question around, um, as you uh provide professional development for the teachers, are you providing professional development for the content area supervisors so as they are writing curriculum? Um, that they're also cognizant of where these strategies can fit? And then the second layer to that is, how are you supporting the school-based administrators as you train the um teachers?
Okay, so those are some great questions. I do want to share, we started with the train, the train, the model. And thanks to COVID and shifting our staff, we had to become a little more strategic. And we have actually found asynchronous professional development that reaches everyone to, at times, be a little more meaningful. As long as it's well-done, it reaches everyone, and there's no train the trainer, there's no telephone or miscommunication. Everybody gets all of the information. So we found that to be very exciting. We do work with the, the core curriculum uh supervisors for math. We have an academic language toolkit that's been developed, and we work with them. As you saw with Speak Agent, we have Speak Agent for math and science. It's actually a tool that we found, but we work with the content. And they took, uh, Speak Agent actually took the curriculum and developed their tool to add the supports in, aligned directly with the curriculum. So they're a smaller company. I prefer smaller companies that'll do what we want, that we don't have to fit into another program. Um, and we regularly work with RILA at middle schools. Specifically, we have a collaborative um workshop that we've been doing for a couple of years. Where we bring both the RILA and the ESOL teacher in, and all of our key strategies are integrated into their curriculum. So if you go into the curriculum, you can see sentence frames, you can see visuals, you can see everything. And then as well in social studies, um, Dr. Rose previously learned a lot of our strategies and made sure that she integrated into the curriculum. Can I say it still needs work? Yes. Um, we could always need more people to help support in the curriculum. But we do always try to make sure someone from ESOL is able to support the content when writing their curriculum.
That's great. Thank you. Um, I have a follow-up question that had to do with the endorsement. I thought, um, when I heard you talk about um changing your strategy from increasing hiring teachers with, not that you've stopped, but increasing hiring teachers with ESOL endorsements, and then um instead, growing our own and saying, let's just have teachers have a second endorsement. Is that what I understand? So you have a science teacher and you, and you say, you know what? You can get certified in ESOL, and then you have an additional ESOL endorsed teacher in the building. Is that correct?
It was twofold. So we all know the Great Recession hit, and um we were also taking on a staffing focus, and it was kind of outside of our control. So we don't do all the hiring. We can bring people in. And what we realized is a lot of what we were doing was providing the professional development. We wanted to make sure that we got more people in Prince George's County who had a full endorsement and knew exactly what they needed to do to meet the needs of English learners. And what we found, a lot of times in secondary, our ESOL teachers are self-contained. They teach ESOL. As well as the content teachers, they may teach math, science, social studies. And so they didn't necessarily want to get a whole nother ESOL endorsement because they didn't want to switch to become an ESOL teacher. And what we found is just by having them add the endorsement, finding that the CPD pathway gave away for people with masters to just add an endorsement and have a better understanding of how to support our English learners. We found that to be a more meaningful goal. And if we could get a hundred percent of people in the district certified to teach ESOL, um, we would, it, it'd be a lofty word, about twenty-two percent.
Small steps, but that, that was a great, you know, a great segue into meeting um your goal. And then finally, you talked a little about it, and it was the Resident Teacher Program. So um, I was going to ask, um, do the teachers who choose to go this pathway have to get dual certified? So, or does an ESOL certification clear their way so that they can, they don't have to get another certification? Do they have to have a previous degree or once they come in, once they get the ESOL certification, they don't have to obtain like a content area or elementary certification on top of it?
Correct. Our Resident Teacher Program does not require another content certification. It is solely an ESOL certification, and we did that intentionally. We wanted to bring in people to teach ESOL, and we didn't want to make it dull so that they had additional hoops to, to jump through. And so our ESOL certification is K-12, and they can work at any level, and they're certified to teach any of our ESOL courses K-12.
Thank you. Board Member Valentine?
I want to be, um, just, I mean, how do I say this? I mean, as looking at the demographics in our county, uh, we will be uh most likely a majority Latino-popular school I mean, as looking at the demographics in our county, we will be most likely a majority of Latino popular school district in the next twenty years. If the trends continue. And so this particular space is arguably the most important in the school district. I mean, we could argue it, but I mean, it's hard to. And so my question, particularly as it relates to recruiting teachers, are there any universities or foundations or grants that give scholarships or bonuses or really key? I mean, there's so much, there's money in almost every part of education. You know, you could go to school for free in many different, you know, doing different things. But is, are there partnerships that are happening in other districts around the country around making sure that if students want to become ESOL teachers, that they can do so without incurring any debt? I'm just curious, has that research been done?
So in my background, I love to dig into human resources. I have an undergrad in human resources. So I'm always dabbling in a field that I shouldn't. We've looked and looked and we've also considered, how could we develop a program for people who may want to become an ESOL teacher? Let's say, how do we give them the undergrad degree? And we've looked at ways to do that. We haven't found anything that specifically out there. I'm not going to say I've done it fully exhaustive, but we haven't found anything in particular to get undergrad people certified. There is the ideas, we've talked about the bilingual people that we need. And oftentimes, through my conversations with other individuals in the district, the bilingual people that are interested in education, who could become a teacher, we found a pathway and gotten them into the education system in some way or another. And so it's finding a way to, to use or find the people in our area who are fully proficient in their language, getting them the English skills and then getting them into education. So kind of like what we do when we go, when the federal government sends someone to Germany, they give them a six-week training in German and then have them work there. How could we train people who are living in our neighborhood who want to transition into education but just aren't fully proficient in English? That's the only pathway I could think of, other than hiring people from Puerto Rico.
And Board Member, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but just to let you know, you know, we do have a variety of different partnerships with different universities in the area, through the master's programs and certificates. And so we've been in conversation with them just about these same type of opportunities. Have you all heard anything? Do you know of any scholarships that help to prepare teachers even at the undergraduate level? And we so far haven't come up with anything. And so my background is also in ESOL, was a former, a former ESOL teacher. And so we are constantly like looking and trying to think through how we can bring on more teachers as ESOL as their first certification. And then, and more specifically, those who are dedicated to the field of ESOL. So if someone is paying for your undergraduate degree and you have to give back five years of service in a particular district, those types of things. But we have not come across those just yet. So if you hear of some funding, we'd love to learn about it.
Well, I know my time is short. One recommendation I would have, if you all want to have a follow-up meeting, particularly with, some of y'all may know I'm a, I'm a former Peace Corps volunteer. And so there are a number of, we call them RPCVs or returned Peace Corps volunteers who've served in Spanish. That's, well, I'm gonna say, I don't want to even say Spanish-speaking country, countries around the world and could speak fluently or have been immersed in these languages for at least two years. I know I was. And are not sure what they want to do when they come back. And so I know there are folks within the Peace Corps, particularly are, who are in charge with ensuring that when they return, that they have employment or there's something that they're doing that draws a connection to what they were doing in their, in their host country. And so if, if there were to be a conversation with, between HR, your offices and the Peace Corps, you know, I'd be more than happy to be a part of it to just create, I mean, this is an opportunity to, to create something new. You know, do, you know, are we giving special treatment to our PCVs from certain countries in employment and waiving something or other? I don't know, whatever that thing is. But I know when many of us return back to America, the goal is to continue to develop the language that we learn, but also to do so in a way that is really aligned with the service part of Peace Corps. And so there are sort of RPCV groups around the country. There's a DC, DC is probably the largest one because of some, so many people coming back to this area. But I would recommend groups like the Peace Corps and other international service programs for returned college students, students, many of which are early twenties, but some of which are even mid-career and have decided to apply for the Peace Corps as a second career and are looking to stay in the profession. So I would just recommend that, if that's an area of exploration.
Thank you. I have one additional question. Just out of curiosity, you, in one of your slides, you mentioned the number, you showed the data on the number of students and those who were exiting the ESOL, ESOL program. And of course, COVID decided to come. And so children were home, you know. And of course, they default to the language that they're most comfortable with or that's spoken at home. My curiosity was in what, and it may be a lengthy, so just if it's just, just high level, do students have to take a specific assessment to exit the program? Or there are multiple layers of proficiency that they need to demonstrate so that they can exit the program?
They have to take our access for English learners, which assesses their listening, speaking, reading and writing. And it's embedded in all the content areas and they have to score a four point five overall in order to exit. And they have different percentages, fifteen percent speaking and fifteen percent listening. And then thirty-five reading and writing is how they're weighted to get their score. But overall, they have to get a four point five out of six.
Thank you. That's helpful. Thank you. Any other questions, colleagues? I was trying to practice my way time. I don't think I made it. But it doesn't look like we have any other questions. I would like to thank you so much for this really informative presentation and just look forward to additional updates. And so at this time, I'll just go to the next action item, which is follow-ups and next steps. Colleagues, follow-up items from January twenty-third committee meetings have been posted in board docs for your review. And then as well, I would like to thank my colleagues and then staff from the administration. I can't thank you enough for everything that you shared with us today. And from the board office for all of the logistics and everything that you helped to ensure that this operates flawlessly. Thank you. So again, thank you. And at this time, I will call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Great. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 It is now six twenty-eight. We are adjourned at six twenty-eight. Thank you again and have a good night.
Thank you.